Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F. And into tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Elizabeth Klein and Board Member Joseph Fisher. Before we begin tonight, I do want to read a brief statement from the Select Board in response to an incident that happened this afternoon. Earlier today, the Hingham Police Department learned that a person had called in a threat to shoot up the pride flag that is flying at Hingham's Derby Street Shops. Our police department responded promptly and succeeded in apprehending the suspect was taken into police custody. Fortunately, there were no injuries to persons or properties. However, this incident is a reminder that our town civic commitment to being a welcoming and tolerant community is being challenged by those few individuals who would commit acts of violence in the name of hate. Intolerance and hate will not be tolerated in Hingham. Our commitment is strong and unwavering. Here in Hingham, we have several ways to combat hatred. If you see something that concerns you, please report it to our town civil rights officer, Lieutenant John Marquard. The HPD has established a direct line to Lieutenant Marquard where you can leave a message at 781-804-2230, or email him at civilrights@hpd.org. Further, we have appointed a Human Rights Commission whose mission is to educate and inform the public of programs and available resources to help combat hate. By working together and continuing to respect one another, we will continue to keep Hingham a safe, welcoming place for our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. I just want to note, we will not tolerate any sort of act of tolerance or hatred with anybody based on their race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or any other grounds. And I want to appreciate, I have so much appreciation for Tom and Joe for putting that statement together on very short notice. So let me see if my colleagues want to add something to the statement. Let me turn to Joe first.
No, I mean, the statement is a clear explanation of the town's position and really explains our position that Hingham is a no place for hate town. And these sorts of incidents remind us that threat has not gone and that we continue to need to be vigilant. Thank you.
Joe, thank you. Liz?
Yes, thank you, Bill. Thank you for reading that important statement. Certainly, I echo all of those comments and will continue to show my commitment and our commitment to inclusivity and absolutely hate does not belong here and it will not be tolerated. And special thanks to the police department who acted so quickly and professionally and really stopped another tragedy from happening, a violent tragedy that could have happened at Derby Street. So kudos to them. And please, anyone in the community know that we are absolutely committed to keeping this a safe and welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Liz, thank you very much. Tom, I'm going to ask you that you publish that on our website and to distribute it through our various communications with our residents and through our social media channels.
Will do.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We do not do the Pledge of Allegiance remotely, so I'm going to remove to item three, which is the approval of minutes. Joe, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
Liz, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, with that, I would take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes dated April 4th, 2023.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously, and I would take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute stated April 11th, 2023.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of the Fruit Center for four special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses for the 50th anniversary celebration to be held on Saturday, May 6, 13, 20, and 27, 2023, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I believe we have Mark Bignosa on the line with us today. Mark, good afternoon. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me.
Just state your name. If you're resident of the town, your address. If not, you can state your business relationship with the Fruit Center and tell us about your application.
My name is Mark Bignosa, and I am the president of the Fruit Center Marketplace. Do not live in Hingham, unfortunately. And we're requesting that we get a one to four for those three Saturdays for a pouring license to celebrate our 50th anniversary. There'll be a couple of other things going on. There'll be some food trucks and some giveaways and of course, some other drinks as well there that day.
Excellent. Mark, how many people do you anticipate attending?
150, 200 in there somewhere, scattered throughout that time period.
Great. Tom, has the police department reviewed this application? Do they have any concerns?
They have and they do not.
Great. I know, Mark, I've been to many events of this nature that you've had at the Fruit Center. It's all been very well done, very safe within the parking lot and always a pleasure and certainly a big fan of your business and thanks you to the community. Let me see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Return to Liz first.
I reviewed the application. I saw that the police chief signed off on it. It looks complete to me. Thank you for including the layout as well. Certainly, safety and parking are always concerns, but it looks good to me. So no questions. Thank you.
Joe, any questions or comments?
So my office is directly across the street from the Fruit Center. I too am a frequent visitor and shopper there. I think this is a great event. I did have one question. Do we know when the farmer's market starts? And are these on days that the farmer's market is going to be in operation?
I believe the farmer's market starts, I believe it's the first Saturday or the second Saturday in May. So yes, there will be an overlap, but the farmer's market ends, I believe it's noon. In our event, starts at 1:00. I could be wrong on the closing time of the farmer's market, but it's around that.
Yeah, I think it goes a little later than that. I just think you may wind up having more attendees than you anticipate because it'll just be moving right over from the farmer's market to you guys. And I know the Fruit Center is a supporter of the farmer's market. I just want to make sure that there's been some coordination there.
I have not reached out to those guys yet, but we do, you know, when we have done our events in the past, they have definitely coincided with the farmer's market as well. And the flow is quite manageable.
Great, okay. No other questions.
Joe, thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of four special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses for the 50th anniversary celebrations to be held at the Fruit Center, Inc. on Saturdays, May 6, 13, 20, and 27, 2023, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Mark, best of luck with your events. Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Congratulations to you.
Thanks very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of GPIMA-SBII Incorporated doing business as South Shore Mini, 1040 Hingham Street for a change of doing business as for their auto dealer license. I see Fred Shaw here. Fred, good to see you. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good afternoon. Great to see you.
Fred, if you could just walk us, I know you're a Hingham resident. Just name and address, your position, and talk us through your application.
Great. Fred Shaw, I represent GPIMA. I'm the director at South Shore BMW, South Shore Mini, proudly residing in Hingham since 1968. I'm at 420 Main Street. Just to give you a little background, BMW North America came up with a dealer name initiative where they wanted a consistent dealership name format for every single dealership across the country. They decided upon the format of BMW of Blank, where Blank is the dealership's city or town. So we're currently changing the name of the BMW dealership from South Shore BMW to BMW of Rockland. Now BMW of North America is the parent company of Mini USA. And Mini USA is obviously taking the same dealership name initiative. So what we need to do is change that name as well from South Shore Mini to Mini of Rockland. And obviously, it's our goal here at the dealership level just to have a consistent message when it comes to marketing, advertising, social media. You know, we need to have the same format for both BMW and Mini. So we're seeking a DBA change on the dealer license from South Shore Mini to Mini of Rockland.
Brett, thank you for that explanation. I've reviewed the packet. Everything seems to be in order. So I don't have any questions or comments, but let me see if my board members do. Joe, any questions or comments?
I've got no question about the change of the DBA. I'm fine with it.
Great. Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I also reviewed the application. For anyone that's listening that might be confused, a portion of the dealership is in Hingham, so that's why we're voting on it. But no questions.
Excellent. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of GPIMA-SBII Incorporated, 1040 Hingham Street, for a change of DBA from South Shore Mini to Mini of Rockland in accordance with the application for a 2023 auto dealer's license filed with the Town of Hingham on April 3rd, 2023.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Fred, good luck.
Great. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you.
Take care. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. We are happy tonight to host our colleagues from the planning board. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to our Planning Board Chair Judy Sneath and to run us through a presentation. So thank you, Judy, for joining us this evening, this afternoon.
I'm very glad to join you. It's good to see you all. I am Judy Sneath, this year's Chair of Hingham's Planning Board. I'm joined here by my colleague on the board, Gary Tondorf-Dick, by the town's Real Estate Council, Susan Murphy, and by our community planning staff, Emily Wentworth and Mike Silveira. The, as you all likely know, the planning board is one of several entities authorized to initiate zoning amendments. And this year, the planning board initiated six, and those are the ones that are on the warrant before you. The planning board is also charged under Master on Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, to hold hearings after submitting those proposed changes on any zoning amendment and issuing a report of recommendations to town meeting. And so what I thought the best use of our time would be is for Emily, Emily and Mike to just present to you a summary of each article and the board's recommendations, and then we can answer questions between us.
Yep, we may need to do this as a team effort unless someone's able to make me a co-host for the meeting. Otherwise, perhaps Susan or Mike, if you could pull up the presentation, because I won't be able to screen share.
Let's see if we can make that happen for you.
Great.
Can we do that?
Yeah. Are you able to make her?
Emily, I just made that happen.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, bear with me just a moment.
It'll give me those controls, Bill.
Okay, can folks see my screen?
Yes.
Great, excellent. Okay, so Judy very ably introduced the presentation. I'm going to try to summarize really the intent or the substance of each of the articles and then the board's recommendation on each. And I apologize, we're starting out with the one that may be the most time consuming, and that is related to accessory dwelling units. So the basic intent is to allow newly detached accessory dwelling units. An accessory dwelling unit, just for those that may not know, is a secondary subordinate unit or housing unit that coexists with a single-family dwelling. The other, there are other changes suggested in the bylaw or the article that are related to both detached and attached accessory dwelling units that relate to certain definitions, eligibility, dimensional and design standards. We'll go through those in more detail in a moment, as well as certain occupancy requirements. So before we get to the real nuts and bolts of the article, I'll just provide a little bit of background, and this is recent background because accessory dwelling units is something that the town has discussed, you know, for decades really. But in 2018, the town adopted Section 5K of the zoning bylaw that allows accessory dwelling units with a family restriction and a number of other controls, design, dimensional eligibility. In 2021, a citizens petition was presented to allow, in addition, detached accessory dwelling units. That was Article 27. The result of that article is that town meeting created an accessory dwelling unit study committee to consider the merits of allowing detached accessory dwelling units, but also to look at changes to both attached and detached accessory dwelling units as appropriate. In 2021, just as background, we also finalized a housing plan that includes certain goals related to accessory dwelling units, and in particular, to allow detached ADUs and eliminate the current family restriction in the bylaw. The master plan also was adopted in 2021. It includes a goal to provide a variety of housing to encourage population diversity, aging in place, and to explore the possibility of allowing, again, detached ADUs in some or all of the areas where accessory dwelling units are now allowed for family members, but not for rental. The study committee issued its report as directed by town meeting in the fall of 2022, and thereafter, met with the planning board on a number of occasions to try to finalize a potential warrant article for the December 1st deadline. The planning board held six public meetings during the fall that culminated in the warrant article you see in the warrant. It, again, basically asked if the town would consider allowing detached ADUs, lifting the family restriction, and adopting other, again, design eligibility and dimensional controls. Then thereafter, the planning board opened a public hearing on the article and held six public hearings between January and March on this issue specifically. During that time, they received significant public testimony, including approximately 60 written comments, both in support and opposed to detached ADUs without a family restriction. Ultimately, the board voted four to one to recommend adoption, but provided the family restriction remained in place. The recommended motion of the advisory committee that you see printed in the warrant differs from, you'll see, the original article and the form that the planning board reviewed, but not in terms of substance. Due to certain voting thresholds that were, that are in the State Zoning Act and adopted in 2020, there are different quantum of vote requirements for attached ADUs allowed by special permit versus detached ADUs allowed by special permit. So the advisory committee's recommendation is broken into two parts for that reason. Okay, so now I'm going to go through the substance of the amendment, and we're going to do that through a few charts. This is intended to show all of the standards that are either existing in our current bylaw or would be extended, let's say, to detached ADUs if the Article 29 is adopted. You'll see in green all of the items that are currently in place and will continue to remain in place. And then in blue, I've just highlighted certain aspects of the bylaw that would change based on the recommendations. And it's broken into columns, what applies to attached versus detached, so you can kind of visualize the types of changes that would require a simple majority vote. Those are for detached ADUs versus a super majority vote, which is for attached ADUs. So I'm not going to go through all the green ones. Again, those are existing. I'll just highlight a couple of the important ones. First is the permitting process. It's, you know, ADUs, whether attached or detached, are allowed by a special permit administered by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That means that there's a public hearing process and a butters would be notified. There's a cap. We can't have more than, at this point, it's approximately 155 units that are created ever, and that the property would have to remain owner occupied so that there is onsite, there's somebody responsible for the use of the property onsite. What would change, I've put in italics in green that the other unit, whichever one is not owner occupied, has to be occupied by a family member. This, I'm italicizing that simply because it changed between the original warrant article and the recommendation. So the original article suggested that that restriction be lifted, and the final recommendations of both the planning board and the advisory committee is to keep it in place. The one item in blue here is the minimum lot size requirement. If you're going to create a detached ADU, the current bylaw for an attached ADU requires a minimum of 5,000 square feet. As modified, detached ADU would require twice that or 10,000 square feet. On this page, we've got certain design and dimensional requirements. The first one in blue that would be changed is that the current bylaw requires that any staircase accessing a second-story ADU be fully enclosed within walls. This would allow the zoning board to grant a waiver if there's an exterior staircase, but only on the rear of a structure. The minimum lots, or excuse me, the maximum area of the ADU actually is increased for both attached and detached ADUs. This is consistent with what the citizens petition had requested back in 2021. We right now have 750 square foot or 30% of the gross floor area of a principal dwelling as the maximum. That would be increased to 875 or 35% of the gross floor area of the single family. And then there again in blue, related to utilities, presently, the bylaw requires that they cannot be separately metered. And there's a suggestion that if it's in an existing structure, the ADU is proposed in an existing structure that already has separate metering, that the zoning board could allow that to continue again by waiver. Finally, this chart shows additional requirements, so not modified. These are newly proposed to be in the bylaw. The first is a separation requirement between a principal, single-family dwelling and detached ADU of 10 feet. There are certain location requirements where they can be sighted on that property. Neither of those apply, obviously, to an attached ADU. This next provision, temporary absences, I had mentioned earlier that it's important that the property be owner occupied. That being said, there are certain instances where an absence would be allowed. Military service is one. Otherwise, the current bylaw says that an owner can be absent from the property for up to nine months, and that would be decreased to six months, again, to have more active oversight and management of the property. And then finally, because the intent of an accessory dwelling unit is to create housing opportunities, the bylaw would newly require a minimum occupancy term for the occupant of, that's not the owner. So that is italicized again because the original warrant article had proposed 30 days. That was increased during the public hearing process to six months. It's intended to prevent transient uses or short-term rentals and/or guest houses. Again, it's to encourage housing. And then finally, the definition of family member that exists in the current Section 5K has been modified for both attached and detached ADUs to be more similar to our definition of family that applies to all other provisions of the zoning bylaw. So the reference in Section 5K to a relationship by blood, marriage, or adoption is removed and replaced by a reference to a customary family relationship. In both instances, family also includes caregivers and domestic help. That's all I have. Susan was going to go through the next handful of slides to talk more about the quantum of vote issues and how the recommendation of the advisory committee is formatted. Susan, do you want me to stop? Do you want me to flip the slides for you?
Yeah, if you could keep doing that, that would be great. Thanks, Emily.
Yeah.
So I am Susan Murphy. I'm the town special real estate council, and I generally advise the planning board with respect to matters before the boards and the zoning amendment process. When we're talking about town meeting warrant articles, it also overlaps with town meeting requirements, et cetera, so that I work very closely with town council John Coughlin on those matters. And John has also reviewed these slides and provided his input. So to the extent there's overlap with town meeting voting procedures and that types of things, John has been involved and reviewed and involved in all the conversations. So I'll just, just some background. Emily, is it the first slide? There's one missing. Next, what's the next slide? Okay, there's a slide missing. So do you want to?
I can stop sharing this one.
Stop sharing it. I'll share mine.
Yep.
Okay, yep, sorry for that inconvenience. Give me one second, and I will get to the appropriate slide. Okay. I want to get my Zoom screen open, and then I can share. Okay, can everyone see the slide that says Article 29? Yes, okay. So until 2020, all zoning amendments Um, so until twenty twenty, all zoning amendments in Massachusetts required a two-thirds vote for adoption. As Emily mentioned at the beginning of her summary, there was a change in the law in twenty twenty, um, which governs kind of the quantum, it's, it's referred to as the quantum of vote, but otherwise the percentage of vote that's required for different types of zoning amendments, mainly relate, related to housing. Um, and the required quantum of, of vote for ADUs varies based on what type of ADU is being adopted. Um, it's very convoluted, it's unclear why the legislature just didn't set a quantum of vote for all ADUs, but that's not what they, they've done. So it's created a lot of complications for communities, um, including Hingham this year. So the first test is whether or not the ADUs meet the definition of accessory dwelling unit under forty-eight, section one A. Hingham's does meet the statutory definition, so we don't need to get into that. The next test is whether the ADUs are attached or detached and whether they are allowed as a right or whether they require a special permit. So if you have an attached ADU as a right, that's a majority vote, simple majority. If you have a detached ADU that requires a special permit, that's as a right. But all other ADUs require a two-thirds vote, um, for adoption. Um, in addition, the, uh, changes to forty-eight, section five are very explicit that any amendment that requires a simple majority vote cannot be combined with an amendment that requires a two-thirds vote. So if you go to the next slide, Emily, oh, I'm in charge of the slide, sorry. Um, so section five K, which is the existing ADU, uh, bylaw in Hingham, currently only allows attached ADUs by special permit. So as we saw on the previous slide, an ADU as a right is a simple majority, but an ADU by special permit is a two-thirds vote. Therefore, if you are amending any provisions that affect attached ADUs, you need to have a two-third vote for adoption of those changes. The article twenty-nine for this year's warrant would also allow detached ADUs by special permit. That only requires a simple majority vote for adoption. So we have both going on in article twenty-nine. Hingham ha- is trying, is amending, um, provisions that affect attached. And they're also seeking to adopt a change that would allow the detached by, both by special permit. So John Coughlin and I had a, a call, we provided the, uh, proposed changes to the attorney general's municipal law unit, which is tasked, uh, by Mass General Laws with reviewing all zoning bylaws and other, uh, town bylaws that are adopted at town meeting. And we had a, um, had a call with their, uh, chief attorney in their office. And we walked through kind of the reasoning behind everything. Um, and her guidance was that pursuant to the requirement that they cannot be combined, that they would have to be voted separately. So John and I worked on, um, for the advisory committee's recommended motion, um, the current form of the recommended motion that you see in the warrant, which creates a part A, which amends all the general requirements for ADUs and requires a two-thirds vote for adoption. And if you recall the charts that Emily just went through, all of those changes that were in green showing modifications get, and that affect the attached ADUs get captured by this two-thirds requirement. Part B allows for detached ADUs by special permit, only requires a simple majority vote. Because there's a scenario where part A fails and part B is adopted by town meeting, you would have a situation where all of those modifications, like such as size of the unit, a waiver for, um, separately metered utilities, those types of things could potentially fail. And then you have detached ADUs that don't have the benefits of those. So there is a provision, it's part, in part B, item twelve, that says in the event part A fails, then all of those general changes will get incorporated in for detached ADUs. And I, I have a further slide that will show how this, the vote can kind of play out, um, on the floor of town meeting. So just to recap what the anticipated voting process will be. And again, you'll note the asterisks that the moderator's message on town meeting procedure is found in the warrant. Um, and so there is much more detail in the warrant for any voters who are interested in, in referring to the warrant itself. But what will happen is the recommended motion is the main motion on the floor. Um, and as Emily stated, the recommended motion of the advisory committee is supported by the majority of the planning board, which voted four to one in favor of adoption of those provisions. If someone wishes to propose an amendment to the main motion, then it must be in writing unless it's so brief that it's easily understood. Um, in this case, it's being recommended, uh, by council that anyone who's proposing an amendment actually, uh, provided in writing, um, because it, it, due to the na- the complexity or the multi-layered voting process, it would, it would be probably difficult to do that just by an oral amendment on the floor. Um, we know that, um, Ms. Sneed, the chair of the planning board, has expressed her intention to offer an amendment, um, for the purpose of removing the existing requirement that an occupant of an accessory dwelling unit be a family member. Um, and, and she has been advised that it's recommended that, um, she put such amendment in writing. So if an amendment is proposed, a vote will be, first be taken on the amendment. And that only requires a majority vote. Um, this has been confirmed with John Coughlin under, um, you know, town meeting procedures. All amendments only require a majority vote, um, regardless of whether or not the underlying warrant article would otherwise require a two-thirds vote or other super majority. And the reason for that is that it is not the final vote under the article. So all amendments only require a majority vote to be adopted. Now, once an amendment is on the floor and it gets voted, if the amendment is adopted, then town meeting votes on the motion as amended. If the amendment fails, then town meeting is going to vote on the original recommended motion of the advisory committee. Um, please note in the various footnotes, this is saying this assumes that, you know, there's no other amendments made or anything else. We're just going with the information that's available, um, to town and count, the, the town and council this time regarding this, this warrant article. So whether town meeting votes on the original recommended motion or it votes on the motion as amended, then each of part A and part B will be voted separately. So now I'll discuss what the voting outcomes can be. I will note that, um, we went back in time and we believe that this is the first time since two thousand and six that the town has had a, uh, zoning amendment article that has been broken into a part A and part B. In two thousand and six, there was an article to change, uh, dis- uh, uh, non-binding site plan review to binding site plan review. And there was also a recommendation to have a study committee to review this. They ended up in the same article, part A was the zoning amendment, part B was the study committee. A needed two-thirds, B needed a majority, and town meeting voted in that way. So it, it hasn't been done in a very long time, but it has been done before. Um, that there has been a part A and a part B in a zoning amendment article before town meeting. So the chart before you is what the possible vote outcomes are on the recommended motion if there are no amendments. So as Emily described it, so part A is, as we described, is the two-thirds votes. Those are the general changes to, that would affect all ADUs attached and detached. Part B is the simple majority vote on the detached ADUs. If they both pass, um, as is, then all the recommendations of the planning board will get incorporated as Emily described them. If both part A and part B fail, obviously there's only the attached ADUs as they're currently allowed. No detached ADUs, family member requirement remains in place. If part A is adopted by a two-thirds vote, but part B fails, then you would ha- continue to have attached ADUs with family restrictions and all of the additional, you know, modifications that the planning board's recommended, but you would not have detached ADUs. But that's two-thirds and majority. So, you know, the likelihood that you'd get two-thirds on A, but fail to get a majority on B is probably the least likely of scenarios. What could happen is the reverse. You could have, um, part A fail to get two-thirds vote, but part B be adopted with a simple majority. If that were to happen, attached ADUs would still be allowed. Detached ADUs would now be allowed. Again, the family requirement remains in place. But all of the changes that we're going to apply to both attached and detached now would only apply to detached. So in fact, you would have two different sets of standards for attached ADUs and detached ADUs. Um, part of the reason why there is that item twelve in part B, as we discussed, is it does allow the larger ADUs, which was something that the planning board supported if there is a detached ADU. Um, also this issue regarding waiver of availability of, um, a waiver available for separate utilities because there are existing detached, uh, buildings on homes, on properties that would be eligible for detached ADUs that, um, are already separate and they would need the ability to use those separate utilities. Um, and then also it would impose the reduction in the owner's allowed absence. It would also impose the minimum occupancy for the detached ADUs. That's an important provision from the planning board's discussions, um, from, from what, um, the planning board discussed because there is concern about detached ADUs becoming short-term rentals. So making sure that that minimum occupancy for ADUs is a patch, applied to detached, even if it didn't apply to attached, um, was still, um, an important, uh, factor for the planning board and the advisory committee. So the last slide on this is the possible vote outcomes. If the proposed amendment is adopted by town meeting and assuming no other amendments, then town meeting would come to vote on the, um, on the motion as amended, uh, by this vote. Um, my understanding, um, of what is being proposed is similar to an alternative motion that was, uh, put forward by, uh, the minority members of the advisory committee. So this summary is based on the assumption that the amendment that, um, Ms. Sneed may offer would mirror what the minority members of the advisory committee had proposed. So with that assumption, which is primarily to keep all of the changes proposed by the planning board in place with one exception, which is to remove the family member requirement as to both attached and detached ADUs. So now I'll just walk through the potential vote outcomes. So it's amended to remove the family member requirement. And now we come to vote on part A, two-thirds vote, part B, simple majority vote, they both pass. All of the recommended modifications of the planning board are adopted. However, the family member requirement, which is currently in the bylaw, is removed as to both types of ADUs. Obviously, if both part A and part B, part B fail, um, then only, um, attached ADUs can continue to be allowed as, as, um, as they are today with no changes. If part A is adopted by a two-thirds vote, but part B fails, again, the least likely scenario, um, that a two-thirds would pa- would, would pass, vote would pass, but the majority would not, but it's a, it's a possibility. Then attached ADUs would be allowed. Um, all of the modifications proposed by the planning board would be adopted as to attached ADUs. And there would be no family member requirement for the attached ADUs and detached ADUs would not be permitted at all. Then the last scenario is part A fails to receive a two-thirds vote. Part B is adopted with a simple majority. So again, as in the prior slide, you're, you now, the town now allows attached and detached ADUs. All conditions that are specific to only detached ADUs will apply. So for example, the so- the lot size has to be ten thousand square feet. It has to be so many feet away from the house. Those types obviously go with the adoption, you know, of a ta- detached ADUs. The change in definition of family member that Emily, um, described is not approved. Um, additional changes are approved, but only affect attached ADUs. And as noted, the, no family member requirement applies to a detached ADUs. So you would still have a family member requirement for attached ADUs, but you would have no family requirement for detached ADUs. So that's, that's what's happened if part A fails and part B is adopted. Um, the other changes noted here on the side, on the right side, the other additional changes allowing the larger detached ADU, the waiver for separate utilities, the minimum occupancy to avoid short-term rentals, those would all attach to the detached ADUs, but would not apply to attached ADUs. So, um, though, I, um, I know that that's a lot and it's going to be a lot for the town meeting voters to kind of process. So, um, I think it's helpful that you're kind of starting that discussion, um, today. Um, I know that John Coughlin is also going to be reviewing these scenarios with the moderator so that he, he understands what the potential outcomes are. Um, but that's kind of the end of my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions and I'm sure, Emily, if you have any questions on the substantive changes, then I would defer to Emily and the planning board members on those.
You know, Susan, what I, what I'd ask, uh, the team to do is maybe walk through the articles, we can come back, uh, but, um, and then we'll cover all of them. We'll come back to specific questions, but, but thank you.
Okay. Let me stop sharing. Great.
Okay, moving right along. Um, article thirty, uh, would newly create a minimum occupancy term or rental or lease term um, for residential dwelling units other than accessory dwelling units, um, which we already presented. In, again, in order to prevent transient uses such as, um, Airbnb, Verbo. Um, it, it's codifying our current practice of enforcing minimum thirty-day, um, rental terms, um, which is based on Massachusetts case law. Um, uh, occupancy less than thirty days is considered, uh, commercial use as opposed to a residential use. Um, because article twenty-nine would create a, a different, um, occupancy term, again, of six months. We wanted to avoid any implication that, um, there would be no limitation for all other residential uses. And so again, that's why, um, article thirty was proposed. Um, it's a, a lesser time period in part because many property owners do month-to-month, um, leases. And there was no interest in, um, restricting that, uh, that option for folks. Um, there's the language you can see on the bottom of the slide, um, but that's article thirty in a nutshell. Um, article thirty-one relates to the storage of unregistered vehicles. Um, we have a provision in the general bylaw that, um, presently says that you cannot store more than one unregistered vehicle in residential districts unless authorized by the select board. Um, and then there are no, uh, standards or approval criteria as to how the select board may authorize more than one unregistered vehicle on a, um, residential property. Um, there is case law, uh, the Massachusetts Supreme Court Judicial Court found that a general bylaw likewise, um, regulating unregistered vehicles unless authorized by the selectmen granted, um, discretion that was too broad to the select board. Um, and so that provision was found invalid in order to validate the, um, the intended, uh, regulation. Um, this article recommends that we take something similar and put it in the zoning bylaw. Um, so there would be two new subsets created in our use table. Um, so there would be two new subsets created in our use table. Um, one that would allow by right uh the outdoor storage of just one unregistered vehicle. Um, and two, uh, if someone were to um want to store more than one um unregistered vehicle on their property, that they could petition the zoning board of appeals for a special permit to do that, provided that the vehicles are screened from public view. Um, so I again, the and you're seeing what that format may look like. Um, so the article would A, um, create a new zoning bylaw and B, delete the um current general bylaw related to unregistered vehicles. And this will help um the building commissioner enforce the regulation. Uh, Article 32 is really just a cleanup article. Um, it relates to the downtown Hingham overlay district. Um, the that um, that section of the bylaw has an obsolete reference to a a former use in our use table, use 4.18 um that previously uh related to parking areas for employees, customers, or guests of a use abutting or across the street from it, um, provided that um the petitioner got a certain type of special permit from the zoning board of appeals. In 2006, the zoning bylaw was amended so that the entity administering that type of special permit um changed from the zoning board to the planning board. Um, unfortunately, the reference to the zoning board's special permit remained in the use table um for um a number of years. It ultimately was replaced with a reference to intentionally left blank. And then finally, in 2019, that particular use code was um used again uh for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages. So the reference in the downtown overlay district, use 4.18, um, it it's not intended to refer to retail sale of alcoholic beverages. It's intended to refer to parking areas, and this um amendment would would correct that. Um, I should note for uh Article 30, 31, and now 32, that the planning board and the advisory committee um all recommended unanimously adoption of of these articles. Um, Article 33 uh is is would change um certain uh provisions of the Hingham Harbor Overlay District. Um, similar to the last article we reviewed in the downtown overlay district, there is an outdated reference to use 4.18 um in the Hingham Harbor Overlay District. So item one would correct that. Um, the next two items um both relate to coastal defense structures. Um, the bylaw does not explicitly have a reference to those types of structures, seawalls, um manufactured dunes, et cetera. Um, but clearly, that's an important part of the harbor. Um, we do uh allow certain other accessory uses, like snack checks or storage of floats um in the harbor overlay district. So it seemed appropriate to create a new um accessory use in in the bylaw um specifically for coastal defense structures. Um, and then because of the nature of those structures, the dimensional requirements of both the harbor overlay district and the particular underlying zoning districts um are eliminated for seawalls and vacuums and and other uh defense structures. Um, that's not to say that there would be no regulations. It would still, um, those types of structures would still be su- subject under the zoning bylaw to the um floodplain protection overlay district provisions. That um those regulations are administered by both the building commissioner and the zoning board of appeals. It's possible that they trigger a site plan review application depending on the level of disturbance required uh to construct one. And and then, again, because of the nature of those types of structures, uh, we assume that they would also be subject to conservation commission regulations. This was unanimously recommended uh for adoption by both the planning board and the advisory committee. And then finally, um, that says Article 33, but this is in fact Article 34, so um excuse the numbering. Uh, this last article relates to electric vehicle um charging parking requirements. So the intent is one, to create a standard uh for the installation of EG EV charging stations um and or future um infrastructure capacity um for moderate or large parking lots, um that is 20 or more parking lots. Um, and it it's only if it's a new or fully redeveloped parking lot that these um standards would be triggered. Um, specifically, it requires for parking lots that meet that threshold that um 10% of the parking spaces be equipped um with actual charging stations, stations, excuse me, and that 25% of the spaces um have at least the infrastructure to make them um compatible with the EV charging in the future. So the conduit would would go in basically. Um, and then the second part is that um the EV charging spaces, while they're reserved for electric vehicle vehicles that are actively charging, um, they still could count toward minimum parking requirements for the particular use. Um, the article is um it's supportive of the master plan recommendation to consider in addition to the bylaw um to require EV charging stations. Um, and it is um also anticipating greater need for this type of infrastructure um because of an act driving clean energy and offshore wind, um which was uh enacted in August of 2022. Um, is that will end the sale of all new gasoline-powered vehicles in Massachusetts in 2035. Um, so we looked at other communities that are out ahead of this, um, including, you know, Amherst, Boston, Brockland, uh Brock, Brookline, excuse me, Lexington, um Methuen, um, to try to see, you know, what standard may be appropriate. This is where we landed. Um, an applicant could, if it's not practical, to meet the requirements, seek a waiver from the planning board um through its special permit process. And that concludes the presentation.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, before I uh open up the board questions, uh Gary emailed me with an after an opportunity to speak as well. So Gary, go ahead. Just to don't invite yourself to the record.
Thanks, Bill. I'm Gary Tonord, 1029 Main Street. I'm a member of the uh planning board and representative of the planning board, Board on Majority Position on the ADUs. I wanted to uh thank you, Chairman Ramsey, and members of the Select Board for allowing us the time to present the summary of the discussions that led to uh the planning board's majority vote on this. The uh, the planning board took very seriously the study committee's recommendation that it consider eliminating familial restriction. We looked at all the documents, the recommendations, materials, comments, and public comment. Um, and in some of the, the focus on this is people expressed that, um, you know, living in a residential neighborhood and living in a in a family situation in that neighborhood, we've had the opportunity to enjoy seeing our neighbors' children grow up. Uh, yeah, multi- multi-generational family relationships, and we all continue to enjoy the privacy and of our of our and the sanctity of our backyard's experience. Um, and one of the concerns about providing um uh ADUs not for familial purposes was that it would impact the uh the character um of the of the neighborhoods and the character of the neighborhoods as we see them uh now. Um, and haven't enjoyed them for a long time. And also, that's been the basis of the single-family zoning uh construct in the in the zoning bylaw since its inception and adoption in 1941. So as I said, the family restriction was at the center of this public debate and discussion. Majority of the planning board, yeah, was not convinced that eliminating the the family occupancy restriction would fulfill the the um purposes of uh maintaining and preserving the character and quality of the residential neighborhood zoning that we we currently enjoy and is the basis for why many people have moved to Hingham in the first place. Um, to some members of the board, um, the the recommendation from the study committee that essentially um proposed um rec, you know, placing rental units on on single-family lots seemed problematic um and not in keeping with the overall tenor of the bylaw as it has evolved. Some thought that permitting um rental units on small lots would compromise the the privacy that was is currently enjoyed by the majority um of the residents who who live in the in a single-family construct. The board also noted that um building a renovating structure to make it an ADU would be an expensive proposition and that um that least least ADU premises would would come in market and not affordable uh rents. Um, we did hear that one of the late in the process, the board, after the study committee finishes report, we did hear in our public hearings, a desire to uh provide um rental units for for housing diversity purposes. But um to to achieve the the goals of affordability, we just thought that the economic realities of that would preclude that that entity from happening. And so looking at uh some of the recommendations in the Pioneer Report, and I just quote from the Pioneer Institute report, homeowners are understandably cautious about allowing increases in housing density in their neighborhoods. They might be worried about more traffic, uh paving over yards and gardens, aesthetics of new construction, and the hassle of living next to construction uh and and the potential loss of privacy. We also were concerned that um a rental situation might basically result in a situation where where the residents in the in a rental would be less invested in the neighborhood than the homeowners. Furthermore, um, for most homeowners, the home is the primary equity investment. Um, it's uh it cannot be uh changed without encumbering risks and that um allowing uh the introduction of a typology of rental units in in a neighborhood that is fundamentally a single-family centered um would would pose a a risk that was not positive. Um, and so there are issues of protecting one's one's investment and also protecting one's quality of life and the character of the neighborhoods. Um, also, many municipal master plans emphasize that residents would like to protect the character of the single-family neighborhoods in a small-town feel of the community. Um, right now in Hingham, we we have a provision where if one wants to do a rental unit, one can do it in a two-family, can create a two-family house with a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, this would apply to houses that were built uh also after the adoption of the current bylaw in 1941, as long as the house met dimensional setback in other zoning bylaw provisions. So there is a process now to provide rental units, but do it in a way that's consistent with the character of a single-family house, uh one house on one lot. And and um, you know, Hingham has also developed significant units of of accessible and affordable rental housing through the 40B process and has realized uh almost 1,000 units in in 40B developments that we've seen over the years. So the and uh so these are the purposes that are the reasons why I really don't feel that um that the rental bylaw would would achieve um the goals that have been stated by the study committee. We feel that um, and I think in the majority vote, the sense was that um the uh having, going with the um the recommendation by majority vote of the advisory committee to basically um provide um accessory dwelling units and do it, also allow it in an accessory building or or an outbuilding. But do it for rental purposes was was probably the best decision in terms of maintaining the current character, preserving that character of our neighborhoods and and result in quality of life in the town. Thanks for the opportunity to present for the board.
Gary, thank you very much. All right. I don't have any questions about the articles. Um, what I would like to do is um, Tom, I'd like to work with you uh and Art on getting some of the information Susan put out to the public. I spoke with the town moderator last week. Uh, he also um acknowledged the complexities of uh Article 29. You know, for years, we've been so used to zoning amendments requiring two thirds passage. This is a little complicated one, so I'd like to, I'd like to help um educate residents as much as we can going into the meeting, so there's no confusion when people come to vote on it. But so we'll work, I mean, I'll work with you and Susan on how we can get that information out in the best way possible uh to help folks as they prepare for town meeting, um, because it is a little complicated. Um, but I I also want to express my appreciation to um the planning board and the planning staff uh for their hard work this year. I know this was a challenging year and um, again, everybody did his wonderful job. So thanks for all your work. And um, before I turn it over to Joe and Liz for questions, I do want to point out one last thing. In that this will be Judy's last town meeting um on the planning board. Um, I, uh, you know, Judy, you and I met, I think it was maybe 2005, 2006. I worked on your campaign uh when you were running for planning board. And I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation for your tremendous, tremendous town service over the years. Uh, you have been, I had the distinct pleasure to of working with you on the planning board for many years. Um, you've been a wonderful, wonderful voice um uh in our in our with our planning. Um, something of study committee chair. You work on CPC, 3A Task Force Chair, and so many other areas. And uh, our town is better because of your service, and I sincerely mean that. So with that, let me turn it over.
From you, that is high praise. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. For that, I turn it over to Joe, see if he has any questions or comments.
So just to follow up, uh, really with uh songs of praise for Judy. You've really been just such an asset for the town. And before I had questions, I didn't know if you wanted to speak. I know Gary just spoke about the majority view. Did you have any comments you wanted to share with the board in terms of your perspective?
Thank you, Joe. I will just quickly tell you um the that I reluctantly, after 16 years on the planning board, stand up as the minority voice on this particular issue because I feel very strongly that the town of Hingham spoke through their master planning and through their housing, house planning, housing planning processes, and said that they want to be a more inclusive town, a more diverse town, that they want a range of housing options, and they want to allow people the ability to live in smaller, less expensive places. This is one way by lifting that family restriction that we can give that flexibility to 155 potential properties, which is a very tiny part of our town. But it would do things that would be so important for those people. We all know, especially um Joe and Bill, who have been in the land use permitting, that the special permit process in Hingham is an extremely strong one. And if someone applies for a special permit, whether that ADU is in a home or detached, the permitting board will ensure that any disruption to the neighbors is minimized. The biggest question I have had for my board and for anybody I speak to who says they want to keep this family restriction is, what is the difference whether my friend in Situate, who has a dear friend who's dying of cancer, just got divorced, had to sell her house, and she says, come live over my garage for the, you know, and and she did. Marie lived in her garage for, over her garage for a year while she went through the worst thing before she died. But she could do that in Situate despite not being related to the homeowner. She was quiet. If if it had been the homeowner's son, it would have been a similar experience for everyone. So I I trust in the master planning process, in the house, housing process, housing plan process, and I trust in the special permit process. And I hope you all will too, because I I feel like we're sending the wrong message by saying that somehow a blood relationship has a different impact on a neighborhood than an unrelated person. And I just don't see it at all. So thank you for listening.
Thank, thank you, Judy. Um, I mean, I guess that's sort of I mean, I guess that sort of led to my, my first question, which is, you know, Gary mentioned it concern about a lack of privacy. I I don't understand if a non-family member would be more intrusive on looking at neighbors' properties versus a family member. And see, it, I just didn't understand the distinction. If there's construction, there's a concern about, you know, construction activity, if you're building the ADU for a family member or a non-family member, it'd be the same issue, more traffic. I'm I'm not aware of any study that would suggest that family members drive more or less than non-family members. So the issues that I heard being raised, I I I guess I shared your your concern, Judy. I didn't understand the distinction. I know that Norwell, I think it was last year, they changed their bylaws to specifically allow ADUs without the familiar requirement. And I looked at what they identified as the purposes of an ADU. And I was hoping to get some comments as to why we have ADU. What's the purpose? So the Norwell bylaw says the purpose of ADUs are the following. First, to encourage housing options for persons of all income levels and all ages. And I think that's a goal that we would share. Second, to allow a single family homeowner the opportunity to derive rental income to allow the homeowner the financial ability to stay in place. And for me, that rings particularly true, given the fact that we are going to be going to town meeting, seeking an override. And there's been questions about people who have been residents for a long period of time. They may need to supplement their income. An ADU is in fact, an opportunity to derive income that would allow the homeowner the financial ability to stay in place. So I think particularly for Hingham, at this moment, as we're moving forward with an override, that's an important goal for ADUs. The third goal identified in Norwell was to allow a single family homeowner the opportunity to accommodate other family members in an ADU, which in fact is what I think would happen regardless of how the vote turns out. The next is to encourage the availability of moderately priced year round rental units and promote greater housing diversity in the town and to promote greater availability of affordable housing for young adults and senior citizens. And then finally, and this is, I think, something that Gary espoused well, is to maintain the residential character of the lot in which any ADU is located. So I think the restrictions that are being suggested will would maintain it. The town of Milton actually put out a specific question about why about why don't in Milton, their question was, why don't we just restrict ADU residents to family members? And one of the answers that they gave is unintended consequences. For example, this type of restriction could limit racial and socioeconomic diversity in town. And, you know, we all know Hingham is ninety five plus percent white. Keeping a family relationship means that that racial percentage will persist. And it's those sorts of unintended consequences that will flow from a familiar requirement. So I'm, Judy, I'm concerned with with keeping that restriction. I'm concerned, given the override that we're we're proposing. And I'm also concerned, given what I think the master plan has espoused as the goals of this town and whether or not keeping that restriction is consistent with those goals. And I too have faith in the special permit process. And I'm I'm confident that we're not going to be overrun by ADUs and that to the extent that they are allowed, that the residential character of the neighborhood would be maintained regardless of whether or not the occupant of the ADU is someone's son or daughter or the friends of that son or daughter. So that's an issue that I think ultimately will be decided at town meeting. But I am concerned about the the family restriction. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, thank you. Liz, any questions or comments?
Thanks, Bill, and thank you, Joe, for your comments. And thank you, Judy, for all the work that you've done over the many years. And and thank you to the whole planning board and planning staff. It's obvious how much work has gone into these these warrant articles just for this year. I don't really have any questions, but it certainly is complex. I appreciate you reviewing it and briefing us. And certainly want to make every effort to make this easy to understand for citizens, especially because it's it's will likely be at the end of a long meeting when people are tired. And I think this is, especially the ADU article is is really important. And I do want people to to really understand the options and what they're voting for. So whatever we can do to help communicate and inform people before before they show up at town meeting, I, you know, I'm certainly happy to help do that. Thanks, Bill.
Liz, thank you very much. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on these agenda items? If you do, just kind of wave at me and physically or virtually. Mr. McElany, if you could state your name and address for the record. Yeah, I see Andy. Can we unmute him?
I'll mute yourself in.
We might have to do it.
Tom, Tom, Tom Mayo told me I do better when I don't unmute myself. It's it's Tom's fault, per usual. I wanted to respond to Joe's points very briefly. Andy McElaney, twenty six Myers Farm Road. I'm the liaison from the AdCom to the planning board with respect to Article twenty nine. And I was late, so I did not hear Emily's presentation, but I heard Gary and I heard Judy. And I heard comments after that. And Joe, I I think I can sum up the the thoughts of the AdCom. Our vote was eight to six. But two of the six were not in favor of lifting the familiar restriction. They were opposed to detached ADUs. So it's it's a little different vote that it might first appear, but we we sort of start with the assumption, and if I personalize this, you'll forgive me. So if I moved to Hingham, I bought a single family home in a single family neighborhood. I look around the neighborhood, I look out my windows, and I kind of like what I see. And I check on my lawyer, and he tells me what the zoning restrictions are in the neighborhood, so I'm pretty comfortable that things are not going to change in the foreseeable future and that Hingham is noted for incrementalism in changing generally and very much so when it comes to zoning and impacting people's real property rights. So so now if my, if my neighbor comes to me and says, I'm going to build a whole addition on my house because my elderly parents or my disabled child wants to live there and have some independence. I, of course, have no problem with that. If my neighbor comes to me and says, in addition, or a different neighbor, I like to build a detached structure where my aging parents or disabled child will live. And is that okay with you? I I'm not thrilled, obviously, because it diminishes the value of my property. It affects what I see when I look out my windows. But but I say, well, you know, I like my neighbor. And I mean, I certainly will object to their aiding their parents or the disabled child. So I'm willing under those circumstances for for my property rights to be diminished and the value of my property to be diminished. If my neighbor comes to me, however, and says, I want to build a detached structure so I can rent it to somebody in which I always have no say. Just because I want to produce some income and make my single family lot a two family lot, well, then I'm I'm not very happy. And I sort of say to myself, why should I give up my real property rights? Why should I diminish the value of my house? So you can make some income by converting your single family lot into a two family lot. That's one of the real concerns that people on the advisory committee had with this. And another concern was enforcement. Right now, there are several people on this call who know of illegal ADUs in this town, and nothing is being done about it. The building commissioner has said he will not act unless a neighbor comes in and makes a written complaint. The assessors office even has in its records notations that certain properties come with detached in-law suites, which of course is not legal in the town of Hingham. But of course, nothing is is being done about it. The problem with enforcement is not just the, from a neighbor's perspective, but from obviously the resident's perspective. Does the illegals ADU, has it been issued an occupancy permit? Obviously not. Has it been inspected for any of the electrical plumbing sewer water connection types things? Doesn't have a a smoke smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm. Well, I suppose no one knows. Those are certainly real concerns. And one of the problems with expanding where we are currently is the lack of enforcement of what the existing law is. So so then, if we cannot properly police familial attached ADUs, then we have to be very concerned with adding detached ADUs. And the mitigation of that is, yes, we are concerned. I think we have to, and we're maybe should pass from the selectmen. I think we have to encourage the building inspector to seek to zone, to do more enforcement of this. But but the thought is people will be more concerned about the health and welfare of their residents, of course, if the residents are family members. That also in response to to Joe's point, is there a difference between a rental to a family member and a rental to a non-family member? And the answer is yes, in the first place, there will be fewer rentals to to concern ourselves with if it's restricted to family members. So we don't have the, won't have the problem that Gary talked about with noise and traffic, et cetera. The other thing is that a family member, I I have a presumption that I think is fair.
Andy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, this isn't a debate. I'm just gonna ask you, it's public comments. I'm gonna ask you if you could wrap it up in about a minute or two.
Sure thing. The 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 assumption is a family member has more control over another, the family member who is residing in the ADU. And and, you know, we don't get into the problems of landlord tenant law. The final thing I want to say with regard to the master plan, the master plan was pretty specific that it would encourage exploring the issue of ADUs, but not for rental purposes. So we we shouldn't be concerned, we shouldn't be confused on what the master plan said with regard to that. So my final point is the advisory committee thinks we should follow the fairly standard tradition of Hingham of moving incrementally with regard to ADUs. We have taken the first step by permitting them with regard to families back in twenty eighteen, I think it was. And in attached ADUs, and now the second step would be detached ADUs, was retaining the familial restriction. Thank you.
Andy, thank you very much for the comment. Anyone else like to offer any comment or any questions? All right, not seen. Oh, Beth, Beth, how are you, Beth? Go ahead, name and address for the record. Good to see you, Beth.
Good to see you too, Bill. Thank you, everybody. Beth Rulo, fourteen Prospect Street, and I was a member of the ADU Study Committee. And I just wanted to quickly share a little bit of demographic background that really supports Judy and Joe's comments about the need to eliminate the family restriction. Hingham conducted a needs assessment in twenty twenty two, and there's a lot of good data in there. And if you look at that, you'll see that by two thousand thirty five, roughly, let's say, forty percent of Hingham's population will be over the age of sixty. And right now, the over sixty demographic includes roughly thirty six percent of those residents over sixty live alone. So those two data points really reflect what's happening across the country and what is being closely monitored by the U.S. Census Bureau as a first time ever trend where they're seeing changes in the number of people that are aging alone. They're calling it the solo aging trend. And it can mean you have no biological family for various reasons, or geographically you don't have family nearby. And that cohort is continuing to grow into the millions. And so it's just something that is happening in Hingham too. And it's important for us to recognize that as that cohort ages, having an assumption that somebody that has a need can meet it through family is just not reflected in the data that's growing in the U.S. And in terms of it being incremental, I do think that the nature of the cap really ensures that is going to be incremental because we have over close to seven thousand single family properties, single family zone properties. And this would be a hundred and fifty. So if you graph that, it's it's like a little teeny bar next to this really high bar. So I think the nature of that image really reflects how incremental this is because of the cap. And then the last thing I wanted to say really quickly is I think it's important for us to also think about what's happening in surrounding communities and states. And Susan, I think, had shared at one of our earlier city meeting, some of the stuff happening at the Massachusetts legislative level. In our neighboring states, Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York, they have all gone to buy rights. And there's this trend towards eliminating zoning that hinges on the definition of family. And that's because it's so difficult and inequitable to create zoning that has that divide. So those are just a few of my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Beth, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Patch, just name an address for the record, please.
Hey, I'm Tom Patch, Nine Ship Street. With great trepidation, I weigh in on this. I, first thing I want to say is I actually, I join in on your comments about Judy's service, Judy. And I don't always see eye to eye on things, but the one thing I do appreciate Judy is she's put the time in. And I know, although we may disagree about things, I I think her views are earnestly held. And so I I want to extend my appreciation to her for that. This issue, I I kind of see this as there's the theoretical side of it, and then there's the practical side of it. And I'll try to keep this short because I've done landlord tenant law in this state. And it's an understatement to say that the law in this state highly favors tenants and disfavors landlords. We just finished a situation where we had a government mandated moratorium on evictions. So and you know, it's it's great to talk in terms of, well, this might help people out who are seniors who want to age in place. They can get some income, but the practicalities of being a landlord in Massachusetts, I I just I fear that by advocating this, we're going to create a situation where some senior is taken advantage of. And, you know, then we're in this whole cost benefit analysis where, okay, one one family who wants to live in the town, they're able to get into town. But then we have a senior who is going to be victimized by what we call a professional tenant. And so, you know, and again, how do you, how do you predict this? You don't, you just try to cost benefit analysis of it and and. and and think, well, you know, we're going to help all these other people, and there's a possibility out of some of these that people could be victimized, and then we have to make a policy judgment on that. It's all, and I, the other point, you know, to Judy's issue where she's speaking about her friend in in Situate. You, in in Hingham, uh, the, we we have a little over thirteen hundred houses that were built before nineteen forty-one, single families. And under the little language or or zoning bylaw, you can convert that to a two-family, doesn't have to be owner-occupied. Um, uh, no familiar restriction uh to a two-family with that same A-one special permit. And based on my understanding of the uh zoning uh uh ruling of the Zoning Board of Appeals and and the um Beal case up on Accord Pond Drive, the the nineteen forty-one condition has been uh viewed as um illegal because it violates the uniformity clause. So that basically opens up that provision to everybody who has a single-family house in Hingham. So to Judy's point about, you know, if she were in that situation, same situation, and wanted to have someone live with her, she could avail herself of that provision in the bylaw. She doesn't have to avail herself of the, of an ADU. She could just go with that other form of um uh a housing choice. And that's a, that's a substantial housing choice. Again, six, uh, over six thousand eligible units um for that. Uh, and as Joe and and um I'm sorry, I'm just having a moment here. Uh, Billy, I understand, as attorneys, you know, there's an old saying, hard cases make bad law. And one of the things that I've always had an issue with is when people come in and ask for zoning relief and they basically point to their particularized circumstance. Uh, you know, I want to have my relatives here, something like this. The problem is, you know, zoning goes on beyond that. Zoning ri- rights vest uh unless it's conditioned that the rights don't vest. And so uh if things end up going badly with the next set of people down the road, it's very difficult to roll this all back. Uh, so again, this is sort of just my take on it. I I don't profess to have the answer. Um, I just think that, given, given these uncertainties, uh, taking an incremental compromised approach is the way to go, and I see this as a compromise. Um, as I said in one of these candidate forums, it could, in all likelihood, uh, in a couple of years, we could be having a discussion, this very discussion with a uh, talking about a warrant article to allow exactly what uh Judy is proposing. Uh, and perhaps the fact that we've gone with this compromise approach will allay the concerns of people that maybe doing this will not end up in the bad result. So um, but those are my two cents worth. I I wish I had the the answer. I don't. And I appreciate your time. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, uh, want to thank everybody for that presentation, uh, for the discussion. Uh, one thing I'm sure of is, uh, this is gonna be a very interesting article at town meeting. So um, um, it's twenty-nine on the agenda. And again, we were gonna, I'm gonna work with with everyone to try to get information out about the uh the legal requirements so people can go to town meeting knowing how this article will work. All right, thanks again, everybody.
Thank you. Great discussion.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is uh appointments. I don't believe we have any appointments this evening, Joe. Do you have any appointments?
None, none for this evening, no.
Liz, anything? All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Do any members of the public have any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we would move to uh reports. Um, Art, we start with you this evening. Anything to report out?
Uh, good evening. Uh, just one uh reminder for the community. Uh, the town clerk reminds us that tomorrow, the fourteenth of April, is the last day to register to vote in order to be eligible for both annual town meeting on April twenty-four and the town election on the twenty-ninth of April. The clerk's office accepts voter registration over the counter by email or electronically. You can apply online through the state's online voter registration system. There are links on the town clerk's webpage to that. And uh also, the last day to apply to vote by mail for the town election on the twenty-ninth is Monday, the twenty-fourth. Those applications can also be found on the town clerk's website. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You know, I wanted to uh thank you for your work on the um public information sessions that we had. Uh, two very successful sessions, and I know you uh ran point for us on that. So thank you for your effort and hard work there. You did a wonderful job. Tom, anything to report out this evening?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, uh, Joe, anything to report?
Uh, yes, uh, actually, Liz and I went to the annual volunteer appreciation luncheon at the Hingham Senior Center on Tuesday, um, very well attended. Uh, the volunteers who support the senior center um give a lot. They give their time, they give their enthusiasm, uh, their warmth uh and their and their commitment to the town. And it's just amazing to to see them. And uh Liz gave a wonderful uh acknowledgement at that luncheon, uh acknowledging the efforts of our, of the volunteers. And I just want to add my voice uh of thanks to the volunteers at the uh the senior center. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, anything to report tonight?
Thanks, Joe. Um, thanks, Bill. And yes, the senior volunteer luncheon was wonderful and certainly inspiring to see all, all the volunteer hours and and level of dedication and expertise um that that is donated each year. Um, I just wanted to also say thank you to Sue Sarni and um the team that put together the um wellness event last night, the first in the mental health uh speaker series. Um, so thank you to everyone that attended and and helped to to put that together. Um, and in addition to the information sessions, um we, several of us are doing uh coffee chats this Saturday, eight to ten. So look for us at your uh, your local coffee shop, um Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Red Iroster's, Atlantic Bagel. Um, I think Brugers too. So um, look, if anybody has questions, um, certainly stop by and and see us on Saturday. That's it.
Liz, you stole all my thunder on the great stuff going on. Thank you for covering it. Yeah, looking forward to seeing people on Saturday. Uh, we have information on where we're gonna be uh all over town. So you can't miss us. Want a cup of coffee? Come see me, I'll even buy you a cup of coffee. All right. All right, um, lot going on. Next week is vacation week. Every, people going away. I hope I have a good vacation. Uh, we are gonna meet next week, I believe, on the nineteenth. Um, time to be determined, but um next Wednesday night. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, it's the favorite, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.